You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the February 11th, 2025 Winston-Salem. I do not have time for sharing. I appreciate your attendance and we say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Please rise as we start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is from Helen Keller and it is a salute to Valentine's Day. "The best and most beautiful things in the world cannot be seen nor even touched; they must be felt with the heart." We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to move for the agenda to be moved as written? Okay, thank you.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon and a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Please welcome the Carver High School Concert Band.
Many residents of Winston-Salem are familiar with the Carver High School Marching Band, but this evening, we will listen to a performance by members of the Carver High School Concert Band. These students have proudly represented their school at community performances where they have always been well received. Tonight, the band will perform Andromeda Overture by Mark Williams under the direction of Mr. Juan Ecker. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the Carver High School Concert Band.
If there are any family members of this incredible band in the audience, could you please stand as well? And I'd like to recognize Dr. Maxwell, the Principal of Carver. And just to say, it is flu season, so we are waving. We're doing the wave a little bit. Next on our agenda is the public hearing, which will be led by Chris Weigert, our Chief Human Resource Officer. He will be leading us in the hearing on closing the Virtual Academy's school code to institute shifts of virtual instruction. Please be kind and respectful and know that you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening Chair Kaplan, Vice President, Board Members, Superintendent. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(72), we're requesting the Board to open a public hearing regarding the discontinuance of the Virtual Academy School Code and the recommendation to move Virtual Academy instruction into a 612 program at Winston-Salem Prep Academy and then with the elementary school phase of the program phasing out over the next two school years to be housed at Cook Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Ann Proctor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent McManus and District Leaders. I am Ann Proctor and I'm the Assistant Principal of Instruction for the Virtual Academy. With the decision of our school's future being decided tonight, I do want to reiterate bless you the importance of continuing to develop and foster the school community established since the school's inception of the future schools. It will be imperative that our families are supported throughout this transition beyond just communication by telephone and email. We are looking forward to our in-person events planned for the spring and cordially invite you to attend and participate in our events as a manner in which families can be seen and feel heard or volunteer at, excuse me, or volunteer as a test proctor or hall monitor for our in-person testing in May. We will continue to live out our motto of transforming learning for growth at this juncture of this transformation of our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Mays.
Good evening Chairwoman Kaplan of the Board, Superintendent McManus. I am Rhonda Mays. I'm a former school social worker here in this district for many years. And as a school social worker, one of the things that we do is to try to make certain that we eliminate barriers to student success. And if those barriers are health barriers or they're having issues with connecting or whatever the situation is, we try to address those particular issues. Virtual Academy addressed some of those issues for some of the students here in Forsyth County. Virtual Academy is not something that every district has. You have something that's already in place. Does it need to be looked at and maybe modified some way? Yes. Because one of the things you don't want to lose is the students who you have who are going, who are part of Virtual Academy. You want to make certain that you can keep the students from going into other virtual settings because they're out there. Every day, we have students throughout North Carolina who are registering or trying to register into a virtual setting that are located here in North Carolina and some of those places are not even part of North Carolina. You have something. You have something already in place. You say that there's a decrease in the number of students who are participating in it. Look at that. Why is there a decrease? Is it a decrease because of marketing? Do people even know that it is an option, that Virtual Academy is something that they can have here within the district and not have to go outside of the district to go into a virtual setting? There are things that still need to be looked at before you make this decision because this is something, again, every district does not have and that you find that you may need it and you need it not always for the whole year. You may need it for different phases of a student's or a family's life or even of your staff's life. There are some staff members who cannot go back to teaching in person. There are some students that it's not conducive to go back at this time to full-time in person who are part of your virtual school. Please really consider those issues and make certain that you have looked at everything before you decide to retire Virtual Academy the way it is now. And even with the changes that you're talking about making, maybe, maybe some good things in there, but at the same time, don't do away with your virtual schools because someone, some districts are still trying to figure out how they can get one. Thank you.
Shannie Easter.
Good evening, everyone. I come to speak to you tonight not just as the president of FCAE, but as an educator and a parent of two children in the school system, also someone who has experienced virtual teaching during the pandemic and knows the success of virtual learning, especially with my own son. The recommendation to dissolve the whole school entity option of Virtual Academy really concerns me on several fronts. I remember sitting in the district school board workshops last year and hearing from several of you when talking about how WSFCS has actually held strong in our numbers compared to other districts who have lost enormous amounts of students to private charter and homeschool. And you were proud of the fact that we still had our own virtual school option available. I hear the phrase all the time from you all that we need to be competitive. I know students will still have the virtual class option at Cook and Winston-Salem Prep, but I would argue it won't be at the same level of drive, engagement, or support as they are getting right now as a whole school entity and community. If we want to keep this modality of teaching and be successful for our students, we have to be all in. While we might not be talking about hybrid learning where teachers are teaching in-person and virtually at the same time, that wasn't even the hard part about virtual teaching. The part that was hard was that we had to figure out what supplies our in-person students needed versus our virtual and what kind of group peer organizations we could do for them, what kind of support we could give them on classwork. As an educator who has been conditioned to try new things when what it really means is to take on more work, I'm very doubtful that the district isn't creating a situation or a position in the hopes of filling vacancies or being in charge of more student needs that aren't being met already. Students and families will be more, will more than likely move to NC Virtual Academy. But it's not just about them, it's about our staff as well. We already know we won't have enough dual in-person virtual teaching positions for the Virtual Academy educators. And while a statement has been made they will have first transfer choice, this was said last year when we had budget cut ESAR-funded positions and it didn't work out that way either and it was chaos. I understand that Mrs. McManus is trying desperately to consolidate money in various areas to prepare for what next year may look like at the, at the risk of the dismantling of the Department of Education, but this is not the place to cut. So many questions have not been answered, but more specifically, how this decision is actually saving the district money. If I could give my own recommendation, it would be that we should advertise and promote the Virtual Academy School just as much as we do our magnet school choice options. And as I wrap up real quick, I want to speak because I'm so proud of Principal Wilson Moore and Assistant Principal Proctor for their courage to stand through the discourse they have gotten from district leadership, for their commitment that they have shown in standing up and fighting for their staff, student, and school. Thank you.
Jennifer Chambers.
One second, my fingers went off. Sorry. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus. My name is Jennifer Chambers and I stand for you again today as both a parent and teacher at the Virtual Academy, urgently opposing its closure and merger with Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy and ultimately phasing out the virtual option for our elementary students. The Virtual Academy isn't just another school, it's a lifeline for students, including my own two children, one of which who has autism, who has thrived in a virtual setting. Our dedicated teachers have built meaningful relationships tirelessly and created a safe, supportive community where students can thrive. As a veteran educator with 23 years of experience teaching middle school, I've seen firsthand the transformative power of our virtual model. Yes, it requires extensive preparation and dedication, but the results speak for themselves. Our close-knit staff has spent five years building something extraordinary, not just to us, but to our students and families, a place where every student feels secure and supported. This is also deeply personal for me, as I mentioned at the last board meeting. Following a severe assault by one of my own students in 2020, causing me to be out of work for seven months, this left me with permanent spinal injuries and unable to ever again teach in a traditional setting. The Virtual Academy has given me hope and purpose again to do what I ultimately love to do, which is to teach. Closing the Virtual Academy wouldn't just disrupt our children's education, it would dismantle a vital support system for vulnerable students and dedicated educators alike. I please ask you to rethink this decision, think of other options, and to preserve this essential educational option that has become a sanctuary for so many. I also have a petition that we created that has now reached, as of today, 1,163 families, parents, students, teachers, community members that have opposed the closing of the Virtual Academy. I will be sharing this petition with each of you. In this petition, you will see all the names and signatures of every person who has signed this opposing the closing of the Virtual Academy. Please, Board, Ms. McManus, I urge you to not close the Virtual Academy. We are a safe space, we are a community, and we are a family. Thank you.
Nico Snitz.
Good evening, Board. I'm here tonight as a parent of a Virtual Academy student. My 13-year-old daughter Lily has attended the Virtual Academy Middle School Program for her seventh and eighth grade years. I asked her if I could share some of the specific details surrounding her transition to online learning and she told me that I could not, that she was not comfortable with that and I would probably embarrass her. So this evening, I'll speak in general terms about my observations as a parent of Virtual Academy and I'll, I'll try my best not to embarrass my daughter. It's true that Virtual Academy only serves a niche demographic of Forsyth County students. In fact, Virtual Academy probably isn't the right fit for most of the children in our district. Quote, "normal, well-adjusted students" will probably struggle with the lack of social engagement. Virtual Academy is not for the majority of students. Instead, Virtual Academy provides a safe learning environment for students that struggle with severe anxiety or depressive disorders. Some neurodivergent students who have been diagnosed with ADHD or Autism Spectrum Disorder prefer the sensory comfort of at-home learning. LGBTQIA+ including gender non-conforming students have found Virtual Academy to be a safe and inclusive environment amidst a culture of bullying and intolerance unfortunately pervasive in many of our schools. While I don't stand here with any pretense of having any perfect solutions for Virtual Academy or our struggling school system in general, I am sure that creating fewer educational options for our students is the wrong direction. Virtual Academy might not be the right fit for your child, but it is the right fit for mine. And doesn't she deserve an education that adequately accommodates her needs? Is that not something that we as a county should be proud of? My family and I think so and so do the students and educators and other parents here tonight. And so I join my voices with theirs and ask that you save our school. Thank you.
Cory White. Cory White. Okay. Jackson Fod, Foday?
Close.
Okay, sorry.
Close enough, I suppose.
Okay.
I'm once again honored to speak on behalf of the faculty, staff, students, parents, and many of my friends who came to support us tonight. This program is paramount to the future of education in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. One of them was born out of necessity during the COVID pandemic that would change the landscape of interaction in the environments, the workplace, and education. A change that was ultimately unavoidable in information technology. So let's wind the clock back 30 years. 1994, Wake Forest University created a program by the name of the Plan for 2000. The goal of this program was put on IBM ThinkPad in the hand of every student on campus. The initiative at the time was one of the most innovative plans of action at university level in the United States. Wake Forest, along with Dartmouth, were on the forefront of technology integration in education never seen before. Technology was evolving at the speed of light. In the beginning of the 1980s, Information Technology Center was formed in the completion of the Wilson Wing at the Z. Smith Reynolds Library. This lab, with only a few workstations, was transformed and charged with the training and testing of this project. This encompassed the teaching student faculty with everything from how to print documents, charge their computers, load software from hard disks, if you can remember those old hard disks, and how to communicate with each other on the local area network or LAN network by T1 Ethernet. There was a steep learning curve. At one point in the early days, there was a professor that actually would print out emails and store them in a filing cabinet. This program began to blossom in 1996. Lotus Notes was purchased by IBM with the goal of HTTP integration, which is what we now call the World Wide Web. This integration with search engines like Netscape, Webcrawler, Internet Explorer, and AOL would become the bedrock for seeking out information. Between 1996 and 1997, the STARS program was challenged with the task of combining the university with the public school system in Forsyth County. I'm not sure if any of you remember that. It was quite some time ago, obviously. It would promote the role of Education Department of Wake Forest University in play, to implement integration of these systems to encourage the opportunity for Winston-Salem Forsyth County School educators to receive a graduate degree in exchange for commitment to bring these ideas to elementary, middle, and high schools. Much like the Teach for Americas program, this was also an endeavor that was novel, exciting, and at the time unheard of. In 1995, nearly 10% of the population in the United States had internet access. By 2000, 43% of the United States would have access from AOL alone had 23.2 million subscribers.
Thank you.
I'm getting close. In 20, in 2003, a company called-
I'll allow about 30 more seconds.
Give me like one minute.
I'm sorry, it's 30 seconds.
Cory White's extended the balance of my time. In 2003, a company called Google was settled down in Mountain View, California and built the largest media company in the world. Heavy lifting has been done with Chromebooks and our students, long gone are the days that made these feats seemingly impossible. Many public and private K-12 institutions across the nation are encouraging, developing, and implementing what is the Virtual Academy. The systems in Virtual Academy such as Canvas and other platforms are school system that are critical to the preparation of students as they are used in college education. Virtual Academy is at the forefront of these advancements-
Thank you, sir.
-a program that is much in its infancy and that will change the game as these implementations did in the 1990s. This is an opportunity that we cannot afford to squander. The Virtual Academy may not be the setting for all students-
Your time is up.
-it does particularly serve and the underserved neurodivergent, non-traditional students that may be subject to bullying and ridicule.
Your time is up.
I lived this as a boy of 12.
You don't, you don't step back.
I implore you to take this chronicle into serious consideration with your vote today. The future is in your hands, not only for these students, but many more. We savor the city of arts, innovation-
Thank you. Do we have any public comments, please? We are now moving to our discussion items. We have no, no one signed up for the public comments on the agenda items only. We have two items tonight for discussion. First, Effie McMillan, our Chief Equity Officer, will discuss the fostering diverse schools' final phase- final phase and timeline.
Good evening, Board. Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus in the esteemed board. We're normally anticipating public comments, so I didn't move quick enough. As always, with me is Frank Pantano, who is our Executive Director for Choice and Magnet, and we are co-leading this effort together. And so he's going to start first, and then I'm just going to share an update on where we are and where we're going.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for that introduction. So just going to talk a little bit about why we're here, our why for fostering diverse schools. So one of the main things that we're really looking at with this project from day one was always two main goals. One of those goals was to update those residential boundaries so that they're more efficient from a transportation standpoint, and also to try to make sure that our schools aren't becoming socio-economically segregated, try to make them more integrated. So some interesting things for you to read here. One of the main things to know is that it's been over 30 years since we've looked at this. It's very common for large school districts to update their residential boundaries on either a two-year or a five-year span. We're a little bit behind, so this project's really helped us be able to take a real good look at it and get the community involved to know more about what the community was involved with. I'm going to pass it over to Dr. McMillan to tell you about that.
So hopefully, for our listening audience and those who are with us in person, has been engaged in some type of way with this work. And so we have broken it down into four phases. We just finished Phase Two, which was our first effort for community engagement. Thank you. And we had a robust effort to engage across our entire community, including parents, family, staff, students. And even if community members did not have children in our school system currently, they may have graduated from here or just live in the community and are passionate about what happens with public schools. We've asked and encouraged everybody to be a part. And so we've got a lot of learning from that in terms of what people were thinking, what was front of mind for them, what was important. And that input was used to create some proposed maps to take back to the community. So we're moving into Phase Three of the process. And so I know for the viewers at home, the timeline is real hard to see. But during our time, we had outreach where people signed up in various ways, about 18,000 people. Out of those 18,000, we actually engaged indirectly or directly almost 11,000 people. So a lot of people, about 8,400 completed the surveys, and then about 2,600 or so did the in-person or virtual conversations, and many other efforts were taken. So from that, maps have been created as possible options. Those are now getting ready to go back to the community. So if you take a look at the timeline, we have a report that is going to give information to the community on the things we learned. That should be released on February 14th, which is Friday. And then on February 20th will be our first community meeting. Information will be shared widely across the community so that families can sign up, staff members, community members as a whole can sign up to review, provide input on those proposals. Through that process, it's going to start in a couple of weeks, next week to be exact, and run through June of where we're going to be seeking feedback. So just notice it's going to be an iterative process, meaning that we're going to take this first round of proposed maps out, get input. We want to take that input and feedback that we get to refine those, and then bring those back for a second look by the community to narrow it down to what the community is most in favor of and in support of to help advance this work. And then part of that process also will be learning from the community what implementation might look like so that we can shape an implementation plan. The implementation plan and final one or two maps that comes out of all these conversations will then be brought back to the school board for a vote on how we're going to move forward. So we're anticipating having everything ready for a vote probably in August, but between that July, September timeframe is where we'll start trying to bring everything to a close so we know how we want to move forward as a district. So any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last discussion item, Chris Weicker, Chief Human Resource Officer, will lead us in the Virtual Academy discussion.
Before Chris speaks, I wanted to just make a couple of comments, and also then he'll get into more details. I know the board has questions that you're going to want to ask. Something very important about this decision for us is really about the fact that we're not stopping virtual instruction. The opportunity for sixth through 12th graders, a sustainable opportunity is what we're talking about here. And so again, I know that hard decisions are made like this across the country where they close schools and ending of programs. This is not the ending of a program. It is a transition into something that is more sustainable down the road. And so what I'm going to say is, we wouldn't even be here today if I thought for one second that the quality of virtual instruction and that whole student experience would not continue. And I know the two schools that we are moving this to in order to keep it sustainable are ready, are ready to embrace it. I would hope the staff that currently exists that would be moving would help with that transition, and that this program will continue for a very long time. I know that the elementary part of the program has decreased, the enrollment has decreased over time, but meeting the needs of our students, whatever it takes any way possible, will always be what we do. And so what I will say is, this is not like ending of a, closing of a, it's closing of a school code, but a continuation of a virtual program, just in two different settings. And I wanted to say that never at any time has this been about, are we concerned about the quality of instruction or the quality of what's happening at Virtual Academy? That is not in question. We believe that quality can continue because many of the staff that are there delivering that would continue. I can also say the two schools involved here, Prep and Cook, if you look at their panorama data, if you look at their working condition data, it is very strong. That will not change with this, and that culture of that sense of belonging and the culture created for students will continue. And so I wanted to say that because I think that, I understand this decision is very hard, and whatever is the will of the board at the end of the night, we will make work. It's hard for us as well. But when we're looking at the big picture of many moving parts, there's going to be a lot of changes about many things between now, next school year, and the next so that we can sustain the best work for our kids. And that does not always mean it's going to be delivered in the same way, but it may be a new way, but still capitalizing on the lessons learned and using the expertise of the staff that has been there. So I just wanted to start with that, Chris. Go ahead and get into the numbers, and then we'll open up for questions.
Well, good evening again. So this slide should look familiar. We presented it last time. As we think about moving our 6-12 model to Winston-Salem Prep, the numbers that we had here was as of the 31st. We have had our choice window closed, and we've sent out the letters for choice. So if you were asking me for an updated number with the assumption that our students remain at the Virtual Academy who are currently enrolled, we'd have about 138 middle school students and then 190 high school students, which would give us approximately 368 kids in virtual instruction, which is a little higher than we have on the potential role slide there. Now, remember, that includes the Kennedy students currently and the middle school. Now, we do know that usually at this time of year, the numbers are a little higher, and not everyone takes their option, but that's kind of what we're looking at right now at the elementary school level with the new applications for fourth and fifth. We'd have 40 students. So if you look at a 3-8 model, we're still at 178 or 4-8, excuse me. So as we look at it, you know, our numbers are kind of where we thought they were. Actually, they're just a little better. So as we think about the numbers and how does that help classes make, that'll kind of go into the benefit part that I'll talk about next. So first, as the superintendent said, by embedding the program, it's a sustainable method to offer virtual instruction long-term. So this is not a discussion every year. Currently, there's 23 Virtual Academies across the state of North Carolina. Two years ago, when I looked at the SPGs, it was 67. And most of the ones who have went away from this, that dropped, just cut it all together. We understand that the virtual instruction, Virtual Academy concept, has a niche that works for a lot of our students. So it's important that we embed it. Winston-Salem Prep was chosen because it's a 6-12 model, and it's the most, only model we have. It's the only school we have that's 6-12, so it naturally aligns. By combining both schools, there'll be a lot of core teachers who will just teach virtual instruction. By doing 6-12, I could see a very theoretical, a very realistic situation where the eighth grade math teacher might also teach Math 1 and Math 2, and they get to loop with their students. Think about the value of that instruction. All right? If you have some ninth graders that need Math 1 and some high-end eighth graders, they could be in the same virtual instruction class. All right? We could actually have natural looping, which, you know, is efficient, but it also helps student learning, but it'll also open doors for more electives. All right? So Winston-Salem Prep and Virtual both have very limited electives. By pulling the staff and pulling students, which then staff comes with, all right, you could have a CT teacher possibly picking up two classes of marketing or an extra section of another course that we don't normally offer, even open up AP courses, which are not really offered virtually, by pulling the resources. And this is not hybrid. This is just through the power of numbers. Of course, we already talked about it, you know, just aligning with the normal choice and magnet fear, and of course, we do have the cost savings. I mentioned we have, you know, of course, the two administrator costs, the three office support staffs, the cost savings, as well as six and a half licensed staff. And that's, those staff members would actually move into vacancies, so our total staff count would come down. So instead of having maybe classes of nine, we'd have classes of 25 to 27, like most middle school classes do. We'd be looking at that way through efficiency. Now, change is hard, and there always have challenges. Part of it, the anxiety that the folks spoke about is real, that we recognize there's anxiety. I shared with two parents who emailed me that I personally had to go through this. So I understand firsthand the anxiety of it. We recognize that, and we are here to support it. We'll support through it. The Winston-Salem Prep staff and the Cook Elementary School staff, along with our virtual staff, will make this happen for kids because we all do it. And then, of course, I also understand the staff concerns. As we go through, you know, this budget cycle next, we always have allotment concerns. At Virtual Academy, we have to reduce staff because of enrollment, which then creates more, some issues there. So I would say that movement will occur regardless, just due to the numbers, but we are committed to making sure we support our staff, and they'll actually get first choice before we open the transfer window, which is different than we did ESER. All right? They'll get first choice place. We've sent a letter to them explaining, exactly outlining it. We shared it with the board as well. So our next steps, if with approval, would be to schedule connection meetings for our students, our parents, and our new principals. Of course, we'll start, continue our, we'll start preregistration for the students who will be going to Winston-Salem Prep and Cook Literacy Elementary School. I realize Elementary School doesn't have much registration, but it's on the slide, nice by him to read it. The current virtual staff will have that placement opportunity beforehand, before we start transfer process, all right? And we talked about it, if there's not something that fits their need or what they want, they'll go a weekly list where they get first choice. It's the only time we've done it where we said, hey, here's the list of openings. What do you fit for licensure, all right, within your pay classification, all right, and you get to choose where you go? No other time have we done that. All right? And then we're, of course, clearly define processes to enroll in virtual instruction program throughout the school year because there are students who sometimes things change in 6-12. Things do change, and we need to have a program, and we need to have a process for kids to go into the program, all right, not based on necessary class size, not based on any other characteristics that student has. All right? Regardless if they're EC or not, all right, if they have an inch, we have had to find a process so a student, their space, they can go into the program to value that instruction. And by the 6-12 model, that actually helps us because it'll be more flexible. When we're really small, there's not many options, and counselors and principals have to make hard choices. A 6-12 model gives us better options to serve kids, the kids currently at the Virtual Academy, as well as other kids who may join. At this point, we'll take questions.
Any questions? Yes, or Member Coon.
So I haven't been able to like wrap my mind around this. I keep thinking about it, and I'm thinking about all the things, and I still think that there has to be another option where we create, I don't know, a differentiated learning center, and they are housed within the differentiated learning center. We've talked about some other, other things where we need to do some consolidation, and we could potentially create this center that allows for kids that don't learn traditionally. Because I got to meet some of the virtual kids when we had our middle school forum, and it absolutely serves a purpose for our students. So I really feel like if there are any other options, we should be exploring them.
Any other questions? Yes, or Member Brown-Gather.
I just pretty much have a statement. And I guess because I did teach when we were in COVID, so I did teach virtually and then also taught the hybrid. And again, I say, that's why I retired. There is a special, there's something special about somebody who can teach virtually, honestly. And my concern is, and what I heard tonight, I want to make sure I heard it correctly. You said basically that the teachers that teach in Virtual Academy now will be offered positions, well, the first ones that come up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm saying all that to say, I feel like because they are used to teaching virtually, it's a gift. And I'm very concerned about us turning to teachers who are not, who have not been doing virtual since COVID. That was put on us, and we had to do it. We had no choice. I'm a little concerned that the teachers at Virtual Academy are not given first priority into teaching virtual because they're the ones who the masters at, as far as I'm concerned. So that's my concern.
And that's a very valid concern. Ultimately, it's always the principal's call, and that's general statute, but as I think I said previously, I, you know, I would find it hard to believe any principal would choose to not have someone who has virtual experience teach a virtual section without a reason over someone who doesn't have any teaching virtual experience. That just doesn't make good sense, and our principals have good sense.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
So I have a couple of questions. So to the point you just made, Dr. Weicker, so statutorily, principals get to decide what explicitly?
Yes, sir. When teachers are assigned to the school, they get to, they assign what course they teach, what section they teach. It's in the first part of the general statute for them.
Okay.
So I see you're nodding his head.
And I guess to that point, so, and I know that in this state, principals do have kind of statutory authority kind of set aside, but principals could not, can principals not be instructed to make a different decision?
Yes, they can be instructed, but then it kind of, it might come a little, like I said, we've talked to the principals involved. We do not foresee an issue as long as the courses make, that's the key, right? The courses have to make, that they will not be teaching virtual instruction. Yes, we could instruct them.
I think, can I just, ma'am? I do think that in this case where we are bringing two groups of kids into one school, we're going to, we're going to need to support the scheduling of all that. So in other words, if, and it's going to depend on the numbers. We heard tonight, how many numbers? If that sticks, we're going to know, and we look at the course, the course selections for kids in the middle and high. I mean, we're going to need to support the leader of that school in the master scheduling option, and with that, yes, we actually, we absolutely will be very like supportive of, these are people that already teach virtually, getting that first, the first ability to do that verse over, and that's not the right word, but the first opportunity to do that over someone that has not been teaching virtually. I think that as we think about Virtual Academy, yes, I think that there are people that felt okay with it back in the day, like some people that, like Board Member Brown-Gather, you would not have said, yes, I want to stay in Virtual Academy, based on your experience. But I think over time, you even, you perfect the craft of virtual teaching, like you learn more tools, there's new technology, there's all different things, and you get better and better at it just with anything else. My hope would be that as we help with the master scheduling and we actually can look at numbers, it's very hard to give hypotheticals without knowing how many courses you're going to actually be able to do of each thing, but the goal would absolutely for us to be to work with the principal to help fit as much as possible the people that have been teaching- the people that have been teaching virtual into those courses. And we'll work with them. And again, Chris has been meeting more, I have not been meeting with the principals, but knowing the principals, the elementary is a little bit different with the classes. The two that go will be the two virtual teachers, I, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Um, the, the middle, high school is a little bit of a different model, but I don't see any reason why that would not be what happens. I mean, there, there's, because again, someone that's been teaching math virtually has a skill set that someone that's been teaching math in person, there's a different skill set. And what we're about is who's going to meet the needs of the kids best. And so we'll help with that to answer that.
And I appreciate, uh, I appreciate you providing that context. Um, I think the, the point I'm trying to get at, and this kind of leads me to my other question is that, to your point, Dr. Weickert about change, the, what, what I think gives people the kind of unease is, is the kind of situation of we have to kind of wait, like we make a decision on what we do and then we kind of have to wait to kind of figure out what the numbers are looking like in order to make a decision. Because people wonder where they're gonna be or what, you know, the future looks like for them. And that's hard to, for people to kind of know right this minute. So I think, you know, to the next question I had is the, the six positions that you mentioned, those are positions that will not go to either of these places. They'll, they have to be found in other schools.
That's correct, the attrition. So I'm gonna get, I'll give you an example. I don't like to go into a lot of positions, but I'll give you a, a general one, okay? Uh, we currently have a school counselor at the Virtual Academy. The school counselor, there may be a vacancy at Winston-Salem Prep and that person could obviously move that position. Uh, however, with our, when you look at our allotment form, there's numbers, even with the additional numbers, they already, they're, they're already kind of in that middle range. It's not gonna push them up for another counselor.
Right.
Um, you're gonna have, it's a magnet coordinator position or half a magnet coordinator position. You know, those type of positions wouldn't necessarily go. And then we've also had to provide extra positions for Virtual Academy because of the small size, which would also be absorbed. So those are the positions that the, the current staff members though, would be placed in other vacancies.
Right. So the, the, I'm, I know about the kind of administrative, like those types of council positions. I'm more so concerned about the extra teaching positions that aren't, that wouldn't be allotted to like Winston-Salem Prep. They would have to be placed in other schools.
So I'll give you an example. We had an employee, uh, teaches an elective, all right, certified in that elective and a core subject. He and I have talked, he's kind of given me a couple of ideas where he would like, uh, at a certain level with other extracurricular opportunities. And I, we've committed to him once we get the list after allotment books are done. In the second week of March, they'll get a list of vacancies before everything posts.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Watts.
So Dr. Work, I, I hear you say a lot about the allotments, but we all know the allotments depend on who's there. And so I'm, I'm concerned because if we make one decision, it could drastically have an impact on the allotment. For if, if parents and students decide not to continue at Winston-Salem Prep, that would have a drastic intake on the allotment number. So then all of a sudden, things would get a little more tougher quote, to make it work. On the other hand, if, if, if we market this well next year and our numbers grow, then that will give us more allotment and gives us more opportunity to kind of do the things that I'm hearing say to be creative in the master schedule. Um, I'm just very concerned as, as a former principal to know that, that those allotment numbers and those are very tight. And when I need a point one or a point two, I have to really beg for a point one, point two. And I don't want us to be in that predicament where we're, we're saying we're gonna do this now, but then also all the numbers decrease and then we're gonna look at something different. So I'm wondering, how can we maybe postpone this for maybe for a year to see, and, and see if we can increase our numbers to really advocate for a stronger program?
So the rationale around this recommendation is, you know, we've had, we get allotted at the district level, you know, by the state. And we've unfortunately, you know, had a decline enrollment over the past four years as well as this past years, you know, this year. Uh, somewhere around the two of six hundred students. So our number of positions district wide have decreased. So putting it to another year means that other positions from other, other schools will be impacted as well. In the six and a half that we're talking about, we actually buffered some extra positions in the allotment books just for what you're speaking of, just in case something comes, so there's not a begging, uh, you know, begging for extra positions. We always look at our small schools, actually at their courses, what makes, we want, we have to offer a comprehensive program. We call it the special allotment teacher, a special allotment teachers. All of our small schools seem like you get one to four, especially at the secondary level. Otherwise, you can't have Spanish and, uh, help the upper level P Es and foreign languages and such and A P classes and honors. So we've actually buffered in for those positions already.
Anything, I think the reason too that, you know, last year that we haven't been as concerned is we had, all of this had been on ESR dollar. I mean, when we, when we started Virtual Academy, it was on ESR and we have, uh, sustained the, what we've done on ESR. And now any, anything over that is not actually allotted by the state, we are absorbing on local dollars. And so that is, that is the concern. And we're in the process of making, um, a lot of hard decisions and reductions, um, on things that are look, that are, that are being funded on local dollars. And more of that will be coming out, um, as we go. And so we just have to realize that. So if we, if we don't, if this does not, if you all said, wait one more year, then that amount that we would need to fund on local dollars, I mean, we're, we're still gonna need to make cuts in the, in the, in the, the load. Or, or, and, but there's still, we, we, there are some, we're gonna need to either spend that money out of local dollars and then figure out what else, because we're, we're gonna be bringing in the budget process now, the other things that are not exactly funded, that need to be funded in our district. Or we figure out, I mean, there, there's, we can't put it on any state funding source. You can't put it on a federal funding source. So I'm just saying the, the absorption of that nine hundred thousand dollar difference is, can only come off local dollars. I just want the board to know. So that's, just so you know, when you're, when you're voting, if we do that, if we can do that, wait a year. But we, it's still going to impact our local dollars for next school year. Some of the adults will need to go, just so you know, we're gonna have to make some reductions. If we wait, that's fine. We'll just have to make some definite reductions in staffing.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Brown Gaither.
Just thinking out the box totally, just came to me. Okay. We have half point five teachers that go to two different schools. In the cases where we have like, and I don't know who the person is out there, I don't have a clue. But the counselor, could we not have a counselor that does point five at prep? Point five at virtual, just an idea, I'm just asking. Um, that would take care of a position. And the same thing, cause I don't know what all the positions were, but I know counselor was one I wrote down. I wrote down a few other ones I cannot remember, but like the art teacher, things like that, the magnet coordinator, things like that. Is that any way we can do something like that?
So you mean, do, you mean keep the Virtual Academy and do a sharing of positions across the two? Is that what you're saying? I'm, I'm gonna make sure I understand, like the counselors share from virtual to.
Well, and it doesn't even have to be prep. It could be another school that has a smaller enrollment. If that, whoever is set there does half and half. Half of the school that has a smaller enrollment and the other half would be for virtual.
Have we, are we already doing that, Chris?
We have very, we have very few half counselors allotted. Uh, most of ours are whole numbers. Uh, the few halves we do are at the secondary level, uh, like one and a half or, uh, like the really large elementary schools, they have like a one and a half counselor. But the counselor, just due to the nature of school counseling, it's kind of a difficult position to share.
And that might have not have been a good example, but I guess maybe I should have looked at maybe art or.
We do share staff between the Virtual Academy. And, uh, for example, we, we've shared before, uh, Spanish teacher with two, between two schools. And even then with the schedules, the Virtual Academy type of scheduling, as well as the other schools, you know, it can be done, but it's a, it's sometimes a little challenging to get everything to work.
Yeah. Board Member Barr? Oh, Board Member Wood?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions, uh, Dr. Work. Could you re-articulate the savings that the superintendent just referred, uh, to which she referred and that you may have mentioned earlier and I'm.
Yes, sir. So we have two administrators, uh, salaries and supplements and all the matching benefits, uh, the three office support staff, uh, then six half, six and a half licensed staff, uh, in savings, which is a little north of, uh, nine hundred, about, it's a little north of nine hundred thousand.
And is that, um, in a given year or is that over time?
That'll be next, those savings will be seen next year.
Next year.
So.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon.
Next year is in next fiscal year, like the end of next fiscal, like?
It'll be seen over the fiscal year twenty-six. So we're in twenty-five now, so next year would, we'd have that last positions on the board.
Got it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are gonna move into our action items. We have four action items to consider tonight. The first one is to consider approval of the closing of the Virtual Academy School Code to institute shifts of virtual instruction. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley. I have a second by Board Member Miller. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering if, and I would have to think that staff has thought through, like somebody mentioned, uh, an alternative school code that could be, right, a differentiated learning code and that could be an umbrella for virtual and Main Street and some other things that could fit in there. Was that considered?
Yeah, so we are already in the conversation about our alternative learning space. Um, Virtual Academy is a, it is a, it's a school. I mean, it is, you're getting your, your core content, it's a school. So we had not considered putting that as part of the Main Street, Kingswood, R three. As, as we're talking about the future and that has not been designed, there's a committee right now designing the future of an alternative learning space and what that could look like. They've taken trips, um, to a school in Statesville. There's a whole design team on what that could look like. Putting vert, adding Virtual Academy to that space has not, has not, um, been discussed, if that's what you're asking.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna follow up on Leah's or superintendent, I'm sorry, do you want me to stop? Okay. Um, with that thought, the timeframe, I mean, if we paused and tabled for a year, would there be an opportunity to have conversations about things like that?
Yep, so, so that would be, that'll come through the, the design team and like once, again, it's, it's, yes. I'm just gonna say yes. You, we would need to discuss what that would look like and then actually have people from, if we would even consider pausing and have Virtual Academy part of that whole redesign, then we would need people from the Virtual Academy on that design team to talk about the possibilities.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. So a couple of things, I think, since we're in the kind of discussion mode. I, I worry about what, so to me, virtual instruction is not, and I don't believe should be viewed as an intervention. I believe that it's a, it's, it's different. It's, it's not, students who are enrolled in a virtual, in Virtual Academy haven't been identified as needing, as needing virtual as some type of like intervention because they haven't been able to, like I, like I, I want us to see, it's, it's a different mindset than like a Main Street or like a Kingswood because those students who have been identified as needing that extra support. And it's just, I, I think similar to like the difference between an I E P and a five oh four, it's just like students need different, like you, you might learn better in a certain environment, but that doesn't mean that you have like the need to have an intervention. So I worry about combining those students under one code and calling it kind of a uniform thing because it's not, it's, it's, it's a little bit different. The other piece for me is about, and this is sort of me kind of taking ownership of what we have said in our conversations, both formally and informally, like in various meetings, is that looking down the road, we have to create opportunity to save money to make other investments that we need. And we're having lots of conversation about lots of different options. The role of this body, I believe, is to make the tough decisions. And, and once we've asked you to do this work to try to identify where we need to go, it, to me, it's, it, it's important to me that just the process is managed in a way that makes sure to preserve people's dignity. And I think that that's, that's what I'm worried about the most in this process is how are we going to be able to make sure that the people who are part of the transition or impacted by the transition are treated with dignity and respect? Because it, we're not just, we're not moving chess pieces. These are human beings with like actual jobs and, um, but, but I also know that we can't, we can't not shift because our needs are really, really dire. So that's kind of where I'm at.
You, I will say that you articulated the part about the learning way better than I did. What I, when I said that virtual, it's, it's a school with, with your, your, it's, it's your core instructional model and that's what the students are, are, that's what they're getting there. And the students in an, an alternative learning center have, have a very different kind of need. They also get core instruction daily at a high level, but they also have a, a lot of other needs. And so again, that whole design is in the works and, and to your point about, um, about working with people, I, I'm hoping that through this process, and I would expect that through this process, that that is exactly what happens with the people that we are going to need to help with the transition. We need great teachers, Virtual Academy, at prep, at Cook, part of that transition, becoming part of that team. We're going to need to meet with the families, the parents, their children to make sure they know, you know, that they feel that they are, um, embraced and that they're gonna continue getting a high quality education virtually, which is really what this is about, a virtual, high quality education is what they're, they're choosing. Um, and so that, we, we would meet with them and make sure that they know that and work every step of the way from now until August to make sure every piece of the puzzle. We did not do anything sooner around knowing the numbers and all that because of this tonight, of, of waiting after we did the first presentation. We needed to wait until we did this part of the, uh, public comment. And so after tonight, if this passes, we would begin many phases of lots of meetings and communication and meeting with staff and meeting with students and their parents and all of that. So that all will come. But yes, I would expect nothing less than to, to maintain the dignity of people. It always, um, that is important and always, and has been for my, at least during my tenure. What I will say is the hard decisions sometimes that we make, even last year when we had to do a lot of transitioning of people, never feel that way to, to people, but I can promise you, it is always at the, the, the front of mind.
Board Member Watts.
And I should have said this to Dr. Work earlier, so, because we talked a lot about Virtual Academy and their staff, but what about the Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy and their staff? Is there a possibility that some of those teachers will be have to be teaching virtual? And if so, how comfortable will they be teaching virtual over a summer of quote, staff development?
Yes, Dr. Weickert. No, good question.
It's a great question. I just like to follow the, uh, you're recognized by the chairperson. So your, the question, if I understand you, is the Winston-Salem Prep staff, will anybody be mandated to teach virtual?
No, no, not mandated.
Okay.
Based on their life or some need, maybe what happened to them. I was coming up about teaching in virtual class and one, that's wondering about how it may play out.
So if there is possible, possibility of it, especially in some of the electives that we were talking about. Uh, we have our digital teaching learning, uh, coaches that will be helping to immerse in there to help provide that professional development. And with approval, then we'll kind of start working through the training on how we'll help assist them do that. I, I would say that, you know, Virtual Academy's had attrition. I mean, we've had stuff come and go. So we, we're, you know, we've had to train staff. Over five years, we, we're getting a little better at it, but nothing, you know, is better than experience along with actually shoulder, shoulder people who have taught it. So the Virtual Academy staff who's taught it will be some of our best teachers and helping our staff. You know, we're gonna have to rely on that, uh, expertise. So.
Any other questions? Okay, so we've had, we have a motion, we've had a second, um, we've had discussion. So once again, I'll read it. Consider approval of closing the Virtual Academy School Code to Institute Shifts of Virtual Instruction. All in favor? Okay. Opposed? Okay, motion passes five to four. Next, consider approval of the Jefferson Middle School Boiler Replacement Contract. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Child Nutrition Procurement Plan. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Amendments Number Five and Transfer Number Five and Budget Amendment Number Six and Transfer Number Six briefed at the January 28, 2025 Finance Committee. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Our next order of business is the Superintendent's Update.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with a slide about, this is on the front of our website, about all of the events that are happening in February. So if you have not seen some of these events, of course, February is Black History Month. And so we have schools all over the district that are celebrating and recognizing the contributions of African-Americans throughout our, our district, our state, locally, nationally, current, past. And so it, some amazing things are happening. Love the Bus is this month, CTE month is this month. We recognized our school counselors about a week ago. And Random Acts of Kindness, there is a, a day on February 17th that we will be really pushing this throughout our, our schools and throughout this month. And then February 15th is ESAR Appreciation. Something that has reached, the next slide, something that has recently been published, and I don't know, this is an annual report that goes out, but it's for last year's data. And this year already, this year, this report already looks like 10 times better. So I'm very excited about the current school year. But it's showing some of the counts that have been published last year compared to this year. And so as we think about interventions, as we think about restorative practices and counseling and the, the additional social workers and all the things that have been happening, it is starting to, to make an impact. And again, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the impact of this year, because we've seen incidents and referrals have gone down and continue to go down in our school system. Next, see for yourself, this is one way that we are actually seeing what's happening in our schools. We've been only in high schools right now. So you've got Mount Taver, Parkland, Carver, Reynolds, and Glenn. We've already had those events. And thank you, many of our board members have been at all of those events. But we're getting to see like firsthand what's happening in our schools and what the actual, what the learning opportunities are. I know last week at Glenn, we walked into a, a nursing fundamentals class and got to see kids doing that. We walked into a, a class where kids were in, doing engineering design. You know, every school and, and those, and that's, and, and also core, core curriculum classes and, and arts classes. It's just, it's been a great experience to be in our high schools with community members, getting to see for themselves what's happening. These are the ones coming up next. We've got West Versailles High, Waukertown, Carter, North, Reagan, East, and Winston-Salem Prep. So we're gonna continue doing that. We won't be interfering during the month of May, calling it interfering. I think they enjoy having us there. I don't think it's an interference. I think they like having people in classrooms seeing what's happening. But just thank you, because I think this is important. And, and I'm hoping we can continue this and actually let parents come in and other people come into our schools and see what's happening on a daily basis. Principal for a Day is tomorrow, and this is a great, thank you Jill Freeman and, and those who have helped get this ready. This is where we have, every school has a, a person from the community coming in, and they will be shadowing the principal in the morning, learning firsthand the challenges, responsibilities, and impactful decisions of school leadership. What we're gonna see is there's, there's a lot of overlap in business leadership, school leadership, but there are definitely some challenges our leaders face and decisions they have to make, that I think our, our community members will also learn from the, from our leaders as well as, it'll be a, it'll be a dual learning opportunity. And we'll conclude with a lunch and learn at the end of the day where we debrief what we saw in the morning. And hopefully it's another way to connect the community to our schools and find out how people can even continue to partner more. Is that it? Yep, that's it. Any questions? I think we'll see many of you tomorrow at the lunch and learn. So thank you. It, the lunch and learn tomorrow is at the stadium, Tru, Truist Stadium. Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have two items for approval. Consider approval of the General Personnel Report and consider approval of the December 10th, 2024 Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve both? Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. Our next meeting will be February 25th, 2025, on Tuesday. And before we begin our public comments section, I'd like to say to Cable 2 viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.